is unacceptable for a man to be prosecuted. Honorable Koon is not a speaker. The deputy was elected, but the speaker is not here, the senator is not there. And now Honorable Koon, he was not elected by his house, and so he is not there. So that should not be repeated, not for him, the speaker, that's the prosecution. That's my observation. And that continues to be said on the court.
Honorable Speaker. The other person is, Honorable Speaker, if I'm mistaken, if I'm mistaken, you are not a speaker, and you shouldn't be setting and prosecuting as speaker. If the speaker is not here, the president's people are not there. And you are not being recognized as speaker of this place. And you are not recognized because you cannot vote for the process. So you are not a speaker, and you can't see how right it is. Please, Honorable Speaker, please. Your information be mine. See, we are not going to read your reflection, and I am going to make a thousand of it out of it. Discovering what is in space. Your information. Your body information. I just said, I'm not a speaker, I'm not a speaker of the house. I'm not a speaker of the house. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You're not a speaker of the house. You can't say that you are speaking. You're not, you didn't have a Friday before you were born. You didn't have a Friday before you were born. Mr. Speaker. My wife, my wife, people see. Mr. Speaker, let me just, in which bullets. Mr. Speaker, let me provide this information. At number one nine is clear. That in every, in every six years, as be a speaker, and as every speaker elected, for a cause by a resolution of two terms. Either the speaker, every speaker, or elected officers would be impeached. Mr. Speaker, every speaker, distinguished police, for the purpose of this conversation, this body from being to a resolution. Let our fifth secretary of this body. Today, there is not a single person denouncing or denying. The work these would do, and they say after, within. Their rules, their constitution now provide that every member should be in session. On January fifteen, on the day of elections, there were some of our colleagues who were staying in court. We were sixty-six, must decide as soon as we can, correct it. Now voting on January eleven. The first year now will run until the members should be in session at our election. Mr. Speaker, let me call out great, yesterday, attention. Our rules privacy, rule forty-two, I stand to be corrected. That no member, no member of this honorable body should arise anywhere on the ground of the Capitol or of the Senate table to the business of the office. Mr. Speaker, in law, in law would be used. In law would be used. In law would be used. If anyone from the government, the status quo, do it on their part. We will invoke the rules. If the first one, if the first one is invoked, the three, four, five. Invoking the pressing manner of the proceedings. And take this, that will be deep measure by this body to take it. No one should court this on the evening. You cannot recognize the speaker, you say the officer, and agree not to the telephone. You cannot find that court is something we have proven to be a recognition. You cannot, you are not, you are not.
I'm at work, I'm at work, I'm at work, I'm at work.
So that's the representative, honorable Clarence, that from Maghidi County, and this kid, number ten lawmaker, Honorable Yekke Kaluwa. And a little misunderstanding here in section. And the speaker of the House of Representatives, the bridge, and number Koon, is calling on his colleagues to bring this confusion to a closure. So, this kid, number ten lawmaker, Honorable Yekke Kaluwa, has been asked out by the Sajna arm.
Five governor, by which he is a messenger. Self-staffed understanding committee report. Signing of a special committee report. Any sort of conversion bill and legislation. Now, this is our speaker's desk. Honorable representative, Honorable Attorney F. Malak. Rabbi Saladi, Rabbi Number Two. And Honorable Austin Biggel. Rabbi Saladi, Rabbi Number Three. Premier, the importance of the house, for the body of our people, and the movement of the country. As well, our knowledge, and our luxury, and the hours, the bureau, to prepare the table of opinions. Regarding the question, now we're planning to set this in the center of the building. He, from the nation, from the labirian, and through the police. Requests for engagement with persons of interest. He will have more police investigation. The chief, from the nation, from their superdose, family, looking for the honor of our representative. After their former representative, Rabbi B. Superdose. Rabbi Number Two. Two miscellaneous, eleven enjoying. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the reading of the draft agenda for today's business meeting, before this city draws the January twenty-three, twenty-five, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chief Flag. With the reading of the agenda, Honorable Kolival, it's a very pleasure.
Honorable distinguished speaker. Our deputy speaker, fellow colleagues. Having listened to the reading of the agenda. And if I can obtain a second. That the agenda be accepted. And then from power, of our today's business.
With the motion, over and settled, man. Are you all ready to vote? All ready, or not?
Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues. To my distinguished colleagues from local county, care on national security. I will be ready to vote. I will be ready to vote. If this simple amendment could be accepted. Owing to the fact that we have issues of national concern from the agenda. And the agenda, I can see. Carrying a communication, showing you, from a former colleague who, called by, from our department. I'll be ready to that this, and the agenda have been broken. And leadership did see something, and rather than the family to have a proper way to go, to have our colleague, our partner, and the fellow colleagues. To the, to our distinguished colleagues from Maghidi. I am only, yes.
Look, I can't believe I'm not the, the motion, are you ready to vote? How do I think you are seeing here? Against, the motion is due. Call for petition.
There is no petition, I promise you that.
Call for standing committee's report.
No standing committee to report, I promise you that.
Call for special committee's report.
No special committee to report.
Call for national bills, grand submission.
No motion, no bill, no information.
This is a speaker's desk.
Yes, sir. There are communications from Honorable Anthony Golan and Honorable Austin Biggel. Dear Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues. I write to pray the importance of this other's bar. For the fight, the authority of the labirian general communication authority, LTA. And whom when they are technical team, and where are us? The authority of, of Lonsa, MTN, and Orange, the bureau. To provide technical details regarding the constant network problems within the southeastern region of Iberia. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues. The southeastern region has been experiencing persistent network issues that have severely impacted the daily lives of our citizens. The poor network condition has caused significant challenges and hardships. Affected number economic activities, and caused control suffering toward the people. Their unreal, unrealizable network has disrupted business operations. Leaving financial losses for entrepreneurs and traders who rely on stable communication from transgressors and coordination, including mobile money services. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues. Given the gravity of the situation. It is imperative that we seek a comprehensive understanding of the technical issues and the measures being taken to address them. Therefore, I respectfully request that the LTA, Lonsa, MTN, and Orange, the bureau, provide detailed explanations and propose solution to alleviate the network problems in the southeastern region. Thank you for your attention to this important matter. Honorable Anthony Golan, Representative, Rabbi Number Two, people's song, and this to the local county. Communication from Honorable Taylor. Dear Speaker Koon. Honorable Speaker and esteemed colleagues. I wish to draw the attention of the plenary for the significant deficiencies in the GSM network conference within Iberian County. A staggering eighty percent of the residents in Iberian County are currently facing challenges related to inadequate mobile network connectivity. Consequently, I propose to understand and give attention to the management representatives of Lonsa GSM, and Orange GSM, to the people plenary to provide clarity regarding the factors contributing to the inadequate network services currently affecting Iberian County, and to discuss potential solutions moving forward. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully. Your Honorable Austin Biggel, Representative, Rabbi Number Three, Iberian County. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. Those are the two communications from your two colleagues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chief Flag. With the communication from our colleague from Iberian County, Honorable William, Honorable Taylor, Honorable colleagues, it's a very pleasure. Honorable Michael Chopper.
You're right, you're right. Honorable Richard, that is Koon, Speaker of the fifty-fifth. Who presided on the Thomas Patafana. Representing the peacevalley people of this one, of our county. Fellow colleagues. Having listened to a very important and essential letter that has to do with a fluctuation of our network as it relates to network communication in Iberia. Of course, communication plays a pivotal role in our operations. So I want to know, Mr. Speaker, that the LTA and a Lonsa telecommunications corporation, and also Orange. Orange, and the center of post and telecommunications should appear before this bar. That's weak. He'll all GSM companies, all GSM companies, to qualify that. Including the chair, the CEO, the technical team to appear before us both in regulatory and implementation of our telecommunications authority to appear and tell the labirian people why our people in no matter they got a clean dream before they can have conversation on your family and across the district. Why, and plus the river, our people there in war, are the goal. Let the tower, so they can have network, if I can see a second.
Fellow colleagues, you're pushing. What, what, are you ready to vote? All ready, or not? Uh, Honorable Speaker. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues. The board, I'll be ready to vote. I may accept this second amendment. I'm allowing to offer another piece of information. These are many, uh, two minutes to expand how I will situation, Speaker, is going to come.
They issue everybody. They issue they issue like a kind of government application in the head of the Republic of Iberia. It's synonymous to, it's unique to every other county and district across the country. You don't need a rocket scientist to tell you that someone who opened it has to go to another town before they can get signal to communicate. So, my honorable, distinct representative, Honorable Peacevalley. District of, uh, Grand City County, I want to formally reject.
Are you ready to vote, Honorable colleagues? Are you all ready to vote? Are you ready to say again? Honorable Chief Flag, keep, I'm coming. Next.
Communication from the labirian national police. January twenty-one, twenty-five. Honorable Richard and Koon, Speaker, Honorable House of Representatives, Captain of David, Honorable, Iberia. Reference. Request for engagement with persons of interest in ongoing police investigations. Dear Honorable Speaker. The labirian national police, LMP. As stands that fires regard to you and members of the House of Representatives. We acknowledge the gravity of the recent fire incident at the capital building and its profound impact on our nation's legislative activities and everything. As part of the ongoing investigations into this unfortunate event. The LMP has identified several persons of interest who in sight could be crucial to uncovering the circumstances surrounding the incident. Given the sensitive, sensitive nature of this investigation and a need for transparent proceedings. We would like to inform you that we have identified members of your house as persons of interest to this ongoing investigation and will be calling them for questioning. Those concerned, those concerned are one, Honorable J. Konati Kofa. Two, Honorable Sa Foko. Three, Honorable Abu Di Kamara. Four, Honorable T. Sainte-Valle Sivo. Five, Honorable Priscilla E. Cooper. Six, Honorable J. Marvin Coe. Seven, Honorable Jacob C. Deli. The LMP is committed to conducting this investigation professionally to ensure that all individuals' rights are respected. We are confident that the cooperation of the House of Representatives will significantly enhance our efforts to prevent feature occurrences of such incidents. We respectfully request if meeting with the identified representatives have a convenient time to discuss the terms and framework of their participation in this investigation. The LMP is prepared to provide any necessary support and coordinate closely with your office to ensure a smooth and effective process. We appreciate your honesty and support in this matter of national importance. Sincerely, Gregory O. Terroy Coleman, Inspector General, Labirian National Police. CC, Honorable Yomri Kanga Lawrence, President, Pro-Terrorist, of the Labirian Study. C. C. Castle, N. Oswald, Twere, Minister of Justice, and Attorney General, Republic of Iberia. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished honourable ladies and gentlemen. That is the meaning of a communication from the labirian national police. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chief Flag. Honorable Deputy Speaker, fellow colleagues, in the reading from the, the communication from the national police. Requesting more of interest to enable the settlement investigation. It's a very pleasure. Honorable, thank you, willing.
Honorable Speaker, Richard, number Koon. Honorable Deputy Speaker. Honorable Tom T. Fad. Distinguished colleagues. Having received a letter from the Chief Flag. I move, like obtain a second. And the letter be open for discussion. Cross-pollination of our years, because of flow. After which time, the motion be taken for the submission of those colleagues to the labirian police investigation. If I can obtain a second.
The motion, four, one, five. Okay, information.
You cannot give, you cannot give motion to your motion. Or you can give information.
Okay, do that.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues. My invitation is to the movement. For the six years and eight years. The practice on the globe is that you give one motion on a particular subject matter. So take for instance, if you want the communication to be open for debate, open it up. The debate will inform the bar as to whether we find a way forward. Or to say, we should open it then after which it should be done soon, so you cannot decide who has no member. So there the information be, the communication to be open for discussion. The debate will be.
Go try, go try, go try, please, take a photo.
So, we are glad that police. We want to, we want to, then we want. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished police. Having listened to my colleague, I move, I can obtain a second, as a combination that was bred by the Chief Flag, acting Chief Flag, the Chief Flag. Like the open for discussions. Like I said, cross-pollination, after which, uh, soon indeed. Thank you.
We have been moved a second and a communication and just a loss from the national police, be open for discussion. Are you all ready to vote? All ready, Honorable, my dear guys.
Honorable Presided, who presided, distinguished police. The movement. What can happen? Considering the nature of the communication rate. That involves our distinguished colleagues. And it has to do with legality. And we appeal to the conscience of the movement. That since this involves our colleagues, regardless of what's happening. We are one side, one fair. I would suggest that leadership takes speech on this matter. Send it to the committee on judiciary. From our legal team, and we're helping our police to abide by exactly what the police are requesting. But the openness matter for discussion. I think there will create more wounds than beauty. Because if we already know the matter. We know I impart invitation to investigate our colleagues. Over basis, we want to open this for discussion. To get a fresh views. So Corey, I believe a few words have sent message to you. And I believe you will accept this amendment. Is that a few? And I believe I get an hour to prove on this one.
Information, please.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Speaker, distinguished police. I think, Honorable, I said, it's very important. All of us here know, we have become a capital baby. In the time of our crisis. So for us to open this letter now to discuss it. For me, I agree with you, actually, in the research, because God didn't know what's happening. This is having an impact on all of us. So when the police have asked us to make sure that our police go there and ask a question. The best thing we can do is to ask our lawyer. Have been paid by this party. To escort them to the police station. We saw those who are working in the jury committee. So that we can see what we can.